How are y'all doing? I was just gonna sit there right here. Is Tyler Mann's film, is she still working today? What did you do?
I'm a date friend. Well, I like the Eric Kicks.
Our invocation be given by Councilmember Banal.
Let's pray. Father, which art in heaven, tonight we come before you, God, thanking you for this day that you've given to us. And at the close of the day, Father, as we gather for this meeting, we ask your blessing upon us. We're thankful for this city, for all the activities that we're part of, for the citizens here, Father, that as we as the council come together tonight to make decisions, we pray, Father, to give us insight and wisdom and discernment, to give us patience and help us as a community, Father, to look to you for strength and for guidance. We ask, Father, your care upon our staff here at the city. You'll protect them as they serve people. God, we're grateful that you call us to service each of us, Father. You've given us talents and ambitions. We pray, Father, that we will use them to your glory and the benefit to mankind, Father. We're so grateful for our time together tonight, Father, and bless this meeting. It's through Christ we do pray. Amen.
Banal?
Present.
Gauntz? Honeycutt?
Here.
Kirkpatrick?
Yes, ma'am.
Lowry?
Yes.
Neal?
Here.
Norris?
Here.
Trig?
Witcher?
Here.
You have the minutes of the last council meeting, Monday, May 24th, 2021, in front of you. If there's no deletions or additions to those, I'll accept a motion to accept them as presented to you. I have a motion by Councilman. Kirkpatrick, thank you.
I'll second it.
Second by Councilman Banal. All those approved signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those that do not, like sign. Minutes have been approved. Under all business, the first, the first motion, first.
Item.
Thank you. It's been a long week. First item of business is the second reading of Ordinance Number 2021, formally accepting the multiple streets in the city maintenance program as proposed at the last meeting. This was by the joint city-county planning and zoning from December 11th, 1979. Do I have a motion to accept this second reading?
Motion.
Have a motion by Councilman Norris.
Second.
Second by.
Lowry.
By Councilman Lowry. As it being a second reading, we'll need a roll call vote.
You want me to read it? You want me to read it?
You can read it again if you want to. You did, but if he wants to read it.
You'd like to make a motion so you don't have to read that?
Thank you.
I'd like to make a motion that you.
Please do.
Thank you.
You don't have to read all those streets, say.
Thank you. Being a second reading, we'll need a roll call vote.
I think you're right.
Banal?
Yes.
Gauntz?
Yes, ma'am.
Honeycutt?
Yes.
Kirkpatrick?
Yes, ma'am.
Lowry?
Yes.
Neal?
Yes.
Norris?
Yes.
Trig?
Yes.
Witcher?
Yes.
Passes second reading unanimously. Next item of business is Municipal Order Number 2021 on the order of the mayor, Terrell Alexander, is hereby appointed to the Fort Williams Restoration Committee.
City of Glasgow Municipal Order Number 2021- blank, on order of the mayor, Terrell Alexander, is hereby appointed to the Fort Williams Restoration Commission to fulfill the four-year unexpired term of Jimmy Nelson. This appointment is a four-year term expiring February 9th, 2023, and is subject to approval of the Glasgow City Council on this, the 14th day of June, 2021. Harold Armstrong Mayor attests, Mona Simmons City Clerk.
Having heard this municipal order, do I have a motion to accept?
Motion.
Have a motion by Council, Councilman Kirkpatrick and a second by Councilman Banal. All those approved signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those that object, like sign. This order passes. Next order is Ordinance Number, first reading of Ordinance Number 2021, ordering amending the Ordinance Number 2020-2966, the city's annual budget.
City of Glasgow Ordinance Number 2021, an ordinance amending Ordinance Number 2020-2966, the City of Glasgow annual budget for the fiscal year 7/1/2020 through 6/30/2021, by appropriating funds from the Unappropriated General Fund, $109,625, for grant expenditures and equipment, and to receive $58,700 from grants and sale of property to general fund, and to appropriate from the Unappropriated Sanitation and Landfield Fund, $154,100 for grant expenditures, rent, and equipment repairs, and to receive $49,571 from grant to sanitation landfill fund. Be it hereby ordained by the City of Glasgow, Kentucky, that the City of Glasgow annual budget for the fiscal year July 1, 2020 through June 30, 2021, is hereby amended as follows. Section 1. There is hereby received the sum of $12,900 into the general fund Parks and Recreation Department sale of properties account, 01-6610-6330, for the sale of surplus equipment. Section 2. There is hereby appropriated from the Unappropriate General Fund, the sum of $3,825 to be transferred to the Parks and Recreation Construction and Maintenance Equipment Account, 010-6610-8515, for equipment trailer. Section 3. There is hereby received the sum of $45,800 into the General Fund Parks and Recreation Department State Monies Account, 010-6610-6320, for the Crumb Rubber Grant. Section 4. There is hereby appropriated from the Unappropriated General Fund, the sum of $45,800 to be transferred to the Parks and Recreation Agricultural Supplies Account, 010-6610-8310, for playground mulch. Section 5. There is hereby appropriated from the Unappropriated General Fund, the sum of $60,000 to be transferred to the Stormwater Department Construction and Maintenance Equipment Account, 010-4440-8515, for a mini excavator. Section 6. There is hereby received the sum of $49,571 into the Sanitation and Landfield Fund Landfill State Monies Account, 085-4430-6320, from recycle grant. Section 7. There is hereby appropriated from the Unappropriated Sanitation and Landfield Fund, the sum of $49,600 to be transferred to the landfill other equipment account, 085-4430-8599, for equipment. Section 8. There is hereby appropriated from the Unappropriated Sanitation and Landfield Fund, the sum of $36,000 to be transferred to the landfill rent and storage account, 085-4430-8240, for rent of a compactor. Section 9. There is hereby appropriated from the Unappropriated Sanitation and Landfield Fund, the sum of $68,500 to be transferred to the landfill maintenance and repair account, 085-4430-8220, for repairs to two compactors and a dozer. Harold Armstrong Mayor attests, Mona Simmons City Clerk, first reading, June 14th, 2021.
Having heard the reading of this ordinance, do I have a motion to accept?
Motion.
Have a motion by Councilman Norris and a second. Second by Councilman Neal. All those approved signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those that object, like sign. First reading passes. Next item of business is first reading of Ordinance Number 2021, Ordinance Adopting the City of Glasgow's Annual Budget for Fiscal Year 7/1/21 through 6/30/22.
City of Glasgow Ordinance Number 2021- blank, an ordinance adopting the City of Glasgow annual budget for fiscal year July 1, 2021 through June 30, 2022, establishing revenues and resources and appropriating funds for the operation of city government. Whereas an annual budget proposal and message has been prepared and delivered to the city council, and whereas the city council has reviewed such budget proposal and made necessary modifications, and now therefore be it hereby ordained by the City of Glasgow, Kentucky, section number one, that the annual budget for the fiscal year July 1, 2021, and ending June 30, 2022, is hereby adopted as follows. I'll give you each category as I'm reading off the figures for each different heading. Administrative, estimated carryover, zero. Estimated revenue during the period, $15,000, $15,266,250. 2021-22 estimated expenses, $2,809,911. Estimated fund balance at year's end, zero. Legislative, carryover, zero. Estimated revenue, zero. Estimated expenses, $94,550. Estimated fund balance at year-end, zero. Police, estimated carryover, zero. Estimated revenue, $198,700. Estimated expenses for 2021-22, $4,115,832. Estimated fund balance at year's end, zero. Animal control, estimated carryover from prior year, zero. Estimated revenue during the year period, 2021-22, is $134,250. Estimated expenses for the coming year, $284,495. Estimated fund balance at year-end, zero. Fire, estimated carryover, zero. Estimated revenue, $41,300. Estimated expenses, $3,461,029. Estimated balance at year-end, zero. Fire substation, estimated carryover, zero. Estimated revenue, zero. Estimated expenses, $58,250. Estimated fund balance at year-end, zero. Communications, zero, carryover. Estimated revenue, $265,000. Estimated expenses during the coming year, $1,160,962. Estimated fund balance at year-end, zero. Street department, estimated carryover, zero. Estimated revenue, $1,105,625. Estimated expenses in coming year, $3,017,404. Estimated fund balance at year-end, zero. Building inspector, estimated carryover, zero. Estimated revenue during the coming year, $158,430. Estimated expenses, $276,153. Estimated balance at year-end, zero. Transit, estimated carryover, zero. Estimated revenue, $82,420. Estimated expenses in coming year, $160,735. Estimated fund balance at year-end, zero. Recreation, estimated carryover, zero. Estimated revenue during the coming year, $58,500. Estimated expenses, $1,317,510. Estimated fund balance at year-end, zero. Swimming pool, carryover, zero. Estimated revenue, $30,000. Estimated expenses in coming year, $51,300. Estimated fund balance at year-end, zero. Lirby Mitchell Clubhouse, estimated carryover, zero. Estimated revenue, zero. Estimated expenses, zero. Estimated fund balance at year-end, zero. SCKCC, June, the carryover, zero. Estimated revenue, zero. Estimated expenses, $48,500. Estimated balance at year-end, zero. Stormwater, estimated carryover, zero. Revenue, zero. Expenses in coming year, $432,103. Fund balance at year-end, zero. The 01 General Fund, estimated carryover, $5,805,148. Estimated revenue, $17,340,475. Estimated expenses, $17,288,735. Estimated fund balance at year-end, $5,856,888. Plaza Theater, carryover, $61,252. Estimated revenue, $288,500. Estimated expenses, $282,164. Estimated fund balance at year-end, $67,588. 015 Stormwater, estimated carryover, $42,445. Estimated revenue, zero. Estimated expenses, zero. Estimated fund balance at year-end, $42,445. Municipal Road Aid, carryover, $168,445. Estimated revenue, $250,000. Estimated expenses in coming year, $250,000. Estimated fund balance at year-end, $168,445. KLEF Pf Fund, police and fire, estimated carryover from prior years, $25,916. Estimated revenue in the coming year, $431,917. Estimated expenses in the coming year, $449,861. Estimated fund balance at year-end, $7,972. GEDL Fund, carryover, $783,202. Estimated revenue, $500. Estimated expenses, $100,000. Estimated fund balance at year-end, $683,702. Municipal Cemetery, carryover, $62,568. Estimated revenue, $356,700. Estimated expenses, $352,541. Estimated balance at year-end, $66,727. The Perpetual Upkeep Fund, carryover, $549,411. Estimated revenue, $16,000. Estimated expenses, $5,500. Estimated fund balance at year-end, $559,911. Sanitation and Landfield Fund, estimated carryover, $8,897,129. Estimated revenue, $3,680,116. Estimated expenses, $4,706,106. Estimated fund balance at year-end, $7,871,139. Closure, post-closure fund, estimated carryover, $5,268,618. Revenue, $14,000. Expenses, zero. Estimated fund balance at year-end, $5,282,618. Estimated year-end balances, carryovers, $21,664,134. Estimated revenues, $22,378,208. Estimated expenses, $23,434,907. And estimated fund balance at year-end, $20,607,435. Section 2, that this ordinance shall take effect as of July 1, 2021, according to passage and publication as required by law, a copy of this information, the entire fiscal year 2021-2022 proposed budget and additional background materials are available for public inspection during normal business hours, 7:30 a.m. to 4:30 p.m. local time, at City Hall, Glasgow City Hall, Office of the Mayor, 126 East Public Square, Glasgow, Kentucky, 42141. Harold Armstrong Mayor, Mona Simmons City Clerk, first reading, June 14th, 2021.
Having heard this first reading of the budget, annual budget, do I have a motion to accept? Have a motion by Councilman Honeycutt and a second. Second by Councilman Witcher. All those.
Mayor Armstrong, before we vote on that, could the City Treasurer speak to us a little bit about increases in this budget on the revenue side and then increases we're looking at on expenditures?
On the revenues, we had the increase of the occupational and the net profits that was put in and voted. That will start in July, but we will not see that until October. Also, at the end of the year, and 1% of that is to go to the GEDL. At the end of the year, when we know approximately of what that is, we'll do a budget amendment and move that proper amount into GEDL. Some of the bigger things that are expense-wise in this budget are raises for the employees. Retirement. The retirement went up to 12%, which, that means it went from 39.38 to 44.33% for the hazardous. It went from 24.06 to 26.95 for everyone else, non-haz. We also have a compactor, it's close to 800,000 now in there. There's a back dump, it's around 200,000. There's some farmland, because we need red dirt, that we're looking at fine, if it pass test, that is in there. There's around 600,000 for some bridge work that is in there. There's capping to be done that wasn't finished this year, that will be finished this next year. There's some supplies, because the methane project needs some maintenance done and repairs. There's leachate expenditures for fixing. There's five passenger vehicles, trucks, that are estimated in here, fire, parks and recs, street, and landfill. There is almost 300,000 in here for continuation of park updates. There is an RTV in here for the cemetery. There is some new weapons that are needed for the police department. There is some new rugged laptops that are needed for the police department. There is a police department maintenance garage that is needed in this budget. There is fire bailout bags in this budget. There's a salt spreader. There's a street roof maintenance requirement in this budget. There's also a replacement of a wall in a salt storage bay that needs to be replaced. And there's continuation on the tap grant trails.
Hey Stephanie, could we get a copy of those, just the big expenditures, maybe by the next city council meeting? And then, do you have with you what the carryover, we got the June 2021 estimated carryover. Do you have the number that was in June of 2020, carryover?
It's in the back of your budget.
Okay.
It's not really carryover per se, I guess if you want, it's the actual for 2020, because that's already been, in 1920, it's already been altered.
All right. Go ahead.
Stephanie, as I'm looking at this, I know these estimated numbers, for the revenue, it's saying 22 million and some change, and then for expenses, 23. So are you saying we got a negative, even with the withholding expected increase, we're still going to be negative, so the money's coming out of the?
It's landfill. There's more expenses in the landfill than we have revenue coming in. That's the fund that's lacking there.
All right. So if we have, say, new employment in the community, increase in withholding, you expect that to come up with another million?
A little over. As long as employment stays or rises, right now, that's, as you know, where you go, everybody's looking for help, so right now, employment's down.
Right. So we're not getting any withholding due to that?
We'll see at the end.
Councilman Trey, I think you see with the occupational license fee that's going to affect July 1, of course, as the City Treasurer mentioned, we're not going to see that money until the next quarter, so we're not going to see it in the third quarter. And beginning of our second quarter of fiscal year, the impact that we really would be under if we had not passed the occupational license fee increase. Because you're looking at about, what, a million dollars coming in from, or 1.2 million?
A little over. If the employment would stay, it might be a little less if the employment's not.
Yeah. So that deficit you're talking about would be a higher deficit if we didn't pass the occupational license fee. So that's how critical that is, how critical employment is in our community.
Any other questions?
Mayor, this may actually be more of a question for you. I noticed, and we had discussed, that nothing is in there for Lirby Mitchell Clubhouse. Are we still on the path to getting all of that squared away?
We're supposed to by July 1 have that finished. We talked to the hospital twice this week. If for some reason they do not get the transfer, we are, July 1, we have relinquished our trusteeship in it, and the family has agreed, I think they have some points to work out. They have agreed with TJ Sampson for them to continue as it's working now. They have some kind of a glitch in it, and they said that the attorney for the TJ said that within the next 10 days, they would have that finalized. So we're expecting not to be any loss, and we're expecting to give up July 1 and them to take over unless something goes awry between them and the family.
If something was to go awry, does it come back to the city or does it just go back to the family?
To the family.
Okay.
Go ahead.
I'm not sure that's exactly right, Patrick. I'm going to be studying that tomorrow to give some answers to the Mitchell family that called me early this morning with questions that had arisen between them and their attorney. And my gut feel at this point is that we are the trustee for the charities that the Mitchell's family set this up for. And when we resign as trustee, I think the responsibility devolves back to those charities to pick who they want to be their new trustee. Now, I think there's a deal in place that satisfies that, and if that deal falls through, then I think we just simply resign as trustee and let them pick whomever they want to be their trustee. So I think we're, our plan is to be out of it either way. And we will accommodate and cooperate with them however they want to do it. We have a great relationship, there is no friction that I'm aware of between us and the charities.
the charities or the Mitchell family either, so I think we're in good shape there.
And this may be, Stephanie, maybe for more M.D. questions. Couple of months ago, we talked about putting two million dollars in play in an investment. Is that still in the works or the plan, or have we decided not to?
It's already been, it's already been put with KLC's joint fund, correct?
Okay, two million dollars of it. Three point five, good. And then one other thing I was going to ask, maybe before I can come by the office and get it, just our interest income on, whatever it is, I don't have my glasses, I'm sorry, the fifteen million or twelve million that we gained last year. Have you got that number that I can come by and get?
Are you talking about interest terms on everything?
Yeah, yeah.
That will be here for the whole year until?
But you can get it, you can get it up till June ten or whatever. Okay. Thank you. And I'm probably going to need you to help me find this carryover from last year, twenty-twenty. It's probably an operator error, so thank you.
Any other questions? Hearing none. I already have a first and a second motion. All those approve of this ordinance, first reading signifies by saying aye. Those that do not like sign, first reading passes. Next item of business is ordinance, first reading of an ordinance amending Glasgow zoning, ordinance rezoning property located intersection of Prestwick Drive and Hume Way containing three point two-four-seven acres.
City of Glasgow ordinance number twenty-twenty-one-dash-blank, and ordinance amending Glasgow zoning ordinance rezoning property located at the intersection of Prestwick Drive and Hume Way containing three point two-four-seven acres, more or less, from I-one light industrial district to I-two heavy industrial district. It appearing that Billy Carver and wife Emily Carver, owners and applicants have requested the zone change for property located at the intersection of Prestwick Drive and Hume Way containing three point two-four-seven acres, more or less. A schematic drawing of said property subject to rezoning is attached here to as Exhibit A and incorporated herein by reference. A trial-type due process hearing concerning said proposed zoning change was held on April nineteenth at seven p.m. by the Joint City County Planning and Zoning Commission, resulting in the recommendation by the commission that the property hereafter described be rezoned from I-one light industrial district to I-two heavy industrial district classification. Three, copies of the findings and recommendations of the Joint City County Planning and Zoning Commission have been forwarded to Glasgow City Council, which are hereby adopted by the Glasgow City Council and are attached to this ordinance as Exhibit B and incorporated herein by reference. Now therefore, B is hereby ordained by the City of Glasgow, Kentucky as follows. Section number one, the findings and recommendations of the Joint City County Planning and Zoning Commission, copies of which are attached here to as Exhibit B, are hereby approved in all respects. Section two, the property located at Prestwick Drive and Hume Way, Glasgow, Kentucky, containing three point two-four-seven acres, more or less, be rezoned from I-one light industrial district to I-two heavy industrial district classification. The real property covered by this ordinance being more particularly described in Exhibit A and incorporated herein by reference. Section three, all future development of this property shall comply with the requirements of the Development Plan Ordinance adopted by the Glasgow City Council on December thirtieth, nineteen ninety-one. Section four, the Mayor of Glasgow is empowered and directed to complete any documents on behalf of the City of Glasgow, Kentucky, necessary to implement this action. This ordinance shall take effect upon its passage and publication according to law. Harold Armstrong, Mayor, attested Mona Simmons, City Clerk, first reading, June fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-one.
Having heard the first reading of this ordinance, do I have a motion to accept? Have a motion by Councilman Capatrick?
Second.
Second by Councilman Baneo. All those in favor of this ordinance signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose, like sign, ordinance passes. You've got a pending appointment notification as per Resolution number twenty-sixteen-dash-twenty-three-forty-one in front of your, in your packet, if you'd review that so you can make your decisions next meeting. And before we go into the announcements, does anybody have any other new business? Hearing none. We have, Wes Simpson had asked to come before the city council, and we didn't get an outline, so we didn't know how much time he needed, so we could put him in this section where he can have all the time he needs. So if you'd like to come up, Wes, and give an update on the downtown project, feel free.
But I wouldn't like to have one for my records, please.
That's a lot of suspense. Okay, so it's been a little while since I stood in this room. Feels like life has changed a whole lot, but here I am again, here to give an update on the downtown Glasgow Park project. If you remember back to January of last year, the city council created a second committee through a resolution called the Downtown Park Steering Committee. In the resolution also was allotted fifteen thousand dollars for design documents. Right before the pandemic, we had been preparing for issuing a design build request for proposal. We'd started talking about the advantages of design build versus design bid build, and so that's kind of where COVID hit. We had to hit the brakes, and honestly, you know, not just for safety, but solidarity with, you know, people losing loved ones and losing jobs and things, it just didn't feel right to continue on at that time. And so we've kicked our process back off now, last month, and it, we recognize the pandemic slowing, there's good industrial attraction news, even, I work on West Main, state roads that everybody blames the city for are getting repaired, so, I mean, like, really good things happening. So we feel like this was the best time to push play on the committee's work where we had paused last year. But we also recognize, coming out of the pandemic, it would be a wise decision to do this project in phases. In our first meeting last month, the committee unanimously agreed to pull the amphitheater, the stage and backstage facility out of the project for a future phase. And you can see that that is, and I'll have this up later, that's the, this portion would be what would be left in for Phase One, this is what we're pulling out here. And so, folks in the crowd as well, this is a portion that stays in, and this will be for a future phase, so I will leave that there for anyone to be able to review. And if you'll remember, in the proposal that we brought back from the first committee, which was the Public Private Parks Investigating Committee, we had a conceptual budget within there. And in that conceptual budget, that part of the facility was budgeted at one point seven million dollars. And you can tell from the view here, obviously, it's a lot of concrete foundations, structural steel, electric, plumbing, HVAC that is coming out. And so we are reducing the cost of the project significantly by pulling that out, but we are in its place. And you'll see on some of your site plans there, we're leaving an area for performances to take place, where temporary staging could be brought in, or just folks can set up there, whether it be the community band, or anyone else, and be able to still provide concerts. The green space is still there, the whole concept is still alive, a community gathering place to be able to come to, not just for the farmer's market, but to bring your children, to play in the splash pad, play on the playground. And so we feel like it's a good, it's a good way to reduce the cost at this time, recognizing we're coming out of COVID. We had a regularly scheduled meeting last Thursday, and decided again unanimously as a committee to proceed with issuing a design build RFP. Now with a design build RFP, if you'll remember, the advantage there is you don't have to get an architect and engineer on board to design and spend the money to do that. What you do is, is you provide concepts and things that you need in the project, and you send them out for design build proposals, where teams, including general contractors or construction managers, along with an engineering and architectural team, then come back with proposals for the project. And so we feel like we can get those design, the design build proposals back for review for less than two thousand dollars in advertising cost, thus saving, you know, around thirteen thousand dollars from what we had in the initial resolution. And so, obviously, as a committee, we're ready to advertise. We've got a document that's about eighty-three pages long, that's got AIA documents at the end, it's got these concepts, it has a bid form, it's got all of those things. Obviously, I'm sure it will need to be reviewed by the, by the city attorney before we send out, but we're ready to advertise that and receive proposals back by August fourth for the committee to review and begin formulating our final proposals to bring back to this council. And there've been lots of good ideas within the committee for possible fundraising ideas on the property itself this year, and community cleanups and those types of things. And so seems to be a lot of excitement, and again, I think people are ready to get out of the house. My wife and I had three daughters, and so we spent a year and a half inside with them, and that's it, there's a lot of people like us, ready to get out and do something. But seriously, we still feel like the project is a viable thing, a very good thing to kickstart to the redevelopment of that area of the town, and still believe in its mission. And I've got Brandy Button is here, she's obviously been a huge part of the project as well as Sustainable Glasgow. They've been fighting for a permanent home for over ten years now, and so that's really, you know, what we've done is try to focus on, the farmer's market pavilion still provides the ability for the city to get revenue off of that through events, and it gives the farmers a place that they can be proud of, call home, and just a beautiful thing here in downtown Glasgow. And so I wanted to bring an update here, asked Mona to put me on the agenda, and so that's why I'm coming to say we are ready to issue that RFP, we think we can get it done for two thousand or less. And, yeah, I'll take any questions and comments.
Speak to the private, the people from the private sector and the commitment of the money, I'm sure people would have, like to know that.
Yes, okay, good, I did leave that out. So we still have the exact same amount of folks on board. None of the private pledges have jumped off, which is phenomenal, I'm very, very happy about that. And so, you know, we feel like we've got over eight hundred thousand dollars right now in solid pledges, and we have a lot of opportunity to bump that number up and fundraise and get some folks off the sidelines once this thing continues to roll. So yes, we've still got a lot of excitement within the, not just the donor pool, but folks that are just excited about the project as well, so.
Did you say keep rolling?
What'd you say?
Did you say keep rolling?
Keep rolling, all right.
Hey Wes, just one thing I would say, a big thanks to American Engineers. I mean, they have been God sends from day one, so.
A lot of work, yeah, there's been a, that's the phenomenal thing about this project, right? The city has spent no money on this. It's all been done pro bono. American Engineers have been fantastic. Sustainable Glasgow has brought in folks from USDA, you know, we've talked with folks from Brad, I mean, it's just been a very, you know, collaborative process. And so it's something to be really proud of, and I think it's going to be a great thing for the city. So I think the only thing we've got to figure out is that I've never done an RFP, we've got the document ready, but we need somebody to, I guess, release us to do that and pay for it, so.
Basically, what you're saying is you're going to put that out for bids and see what it is before we, so we'll know what we're looking at, right?
Yeah, so what we'll do is we'll receive those design build proposals, the committee will accept questions on those up to a certain date, and then we have to provide answers to those requests for information. And then that's going to be a cutoff date for answers to go out to the design build teams. And then once those proposals come back, we've got, we have a public opening date in there where the public comes and can listen to those proposals, which is a week before what would be our second regularly scheduled meeting in August, I believe, is what that is, or July. And so then, what the committee will do is formulate the plan off of those proposals and formulate the final proposal to bring back to this body to proceed with. So that's the process, is to get back construction costs as well as experience, ideas. We left the design license kind of wide open on this, so the hope is that those design build firms will see things that we don't see, and be able to value engineer, provide voluntary alternates and things like that, so. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
The other announcements are the week of June fourteenth through June eighteenth is Waste and Recycle Cycling Workers Week. We want to thank the Glasgow DPW and the men and women who work daily to keep our neighborhoods and our streets clean. We want to acknowledge them tonight, and it, of course, starts today and goes through the eighteenth. Thursday, June the seventeenth, beginning at two p.m., the north, south, east side of the Glasgow Public Square, we'd be closed to through traffic for the vendors set up for the SIP, Shop and Stroll event that will take place from five p.m. till eight p.m. on the, on the Thursday, on Thursday night. There are seventy-plus vendors expected to be at this event, so it's going to be solid vendors around the square. And like for everybody that can come out and visit those vendors and see what we've got going on downtown. Barron County Waste Tire Collection Event will be Thursday, June the twenty-fourth, and Friday, June the twenty-fifth, at the Barron County Transportation Department, 150 County Barn Road. Barron County, in partnership with Kentucky Division of Waste Management, sponsor this event. You can, if you want some information, you can call two-seven-zero-six-five-one-three-three-three-eight if you need more information. That is where we can, tires and rims and everything is accepted at that, isn't it, Judge? You don't have to take your tires off the rims, it's not for the commercial vendors, but it's for the private citizens of Glasgow and Barron County. You can take those out there and drop them off, and they will accept those, both of those two days. I'd like to remind you about the fireworks, the ordinance states, consumer fireworks can only be used June the twenty-eighth through July the third, twelve p.m. to ten p.m., and July the fourth, from twelve p.m. to eleven p.m., and July the fifth, twelve p.m. to ten p.m. So make sure that you're aware of those fireworks ordinances.
Mona, can we get that on the city website?
You already missed it.
It is.
Our next council meeting is Monday, June the twenty-eighth, seven p.m. in person, here at Council Chambers, and all the CDC guidelines that we've had to be under, we'll proceed. Also, I'd like to, I'd like to give a shout-out to our police department. You all know that there was a murder here in Glasgow, and I think it was three days, and they had the, had the, the, four days, I'm sorry, I slipped through the first one. There's been, there was an arrest, and I don't guess he's been transported back here yet, has he?
Yes, he has.
He has? He was, he, we had to be, he had to be, had to be, Tennessee had to give up, they had a warrant or something on him. But anyway, they have, they have caught him, and he is back to stand trial, and they did a wonderful job with what little they had to go on, tracking him down. And I'd just like to say another thanks out, and I know the public is the same way, thanks for the good job that you're doing, continue to protect and assist the citizens of Glasgow. Freddie, you have an announcement?
I'd like to make a plea to the young adults of our town and county, to those that congregate at Food Line, looking to talk and visit with one another, to please put your trash in your car or in your truck as you're out there eating and enjoying one another, and please, please help us with that, please.
Any other announcements? Hearing none, I'll accept a motion. Hearing none, I'll accept a motion to dismiss. Have a motion, Councilman Patrick, and a second by Councilman Neal. Thank you all, appreciate it.